Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order at 7:34 PM today, February 9th. Can I please have the roll?
Village President Ford.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Columbus absent. Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the present courts with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. To begin, one resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution authorizing an executive session at this February 9th, 2015 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
The matters to be discussed in executive session are as follows: The Village Hall, RFP contract negotiations; Fire Department, it's the personnel; Police Department, which is personnel and contract negotiations; Water Supply and East Orange Water Commission update, which is contract negotiations, litigation and attorney-client privilege; Animal Shelter, which is a litigation exception; Parking Deck, New Jersey Transit, which is a contract negotiation. Do I have a motion for...
Move.
Move by trustee Levinson, standing by trustee Clark. All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Back here at 8:00.
Hi, this is Charlotte.
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order right on time at eight nineteen PM. Can we have the roll please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Column is absent. Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance in homeroom silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, before we get started, I've got a couple of announcements tonight. The first one that I'd like to make on behalf of Trustee Column who wishes she could be here, although for everybody in the room's benefit, she's not feeling well, so staying at home, so we actually thank her for that. I know she's not feeling that well, and it takes a lot to keep her from one of our board meetings. So we're gonna go on with a couple of announcements here. One is, I just want to make sure everybody who is here and everybody who's watching at home knows that they are very welcome to attend my State of the Village address, which has been rescheduled a couple times due to the weather, but we are going to be doing it Monday, February twenty-third, at eight thirty PM, just upstairs in the loft here. This is a great opportunity to hear about some of what we've been up to for the past year, and also hear about some of the plans for the coming year. So it's a good recap of everything that's been going on. If you would like to attend, we just ask that you do please RSVP, although it's not required. It's free and open to the public, and if you would like to RSVP, you can do so by calling Village Call at nine seven three three seven eight seven seven one five extension two, or emailing c@cameron@southorange.org. And again, if you're watching, please come out. We'd certainly like to have you, everybody at home there. Next is, we have a couple volunteer positions that are open. One, we have a couple on the zoning board of adjustment, an alternate for the board of health, and an alternate for the planning board. So if you're interested in participating or learning more about any of these statutory boards, they are great opportunities to get involved. And if you are interested in that, please go to southorange.org, and you'll find the volunteer application on the left side of of the website under the volunteering link. And if you have any questions, you can obviously reach out to any of us, or myself at atorpe@southorange.org if you're interested in learning a little bit more about what any of those boards do, and if it might be a good match for your particular interest or skill set. Saturday, February fourteenth is Valentine's Day, and love is in the air in South Orange Village. The South Orange Village Center Alliance, or so they tell me.
They read what's written for you.
That's right. Has comprised a list of Valentine's Day specials and discounts for many of our restaurants and merchants downtown. So if you go to sovillagecenter.org, you can find out some pretty great specials that are gonna be happening in downtown South Orange. And definitely check it out for your Valentine's Day festivities. The annual meeting of the South Orange Village Center Alliance was canceled last month due to the, or last Monday due to the weather. Please check on their website at sovillagecenter.org to get the update about when that meeting will be rescheduled. You can also join their email list to get those updates in your inbox. Just another reminder that there are classes in visual and performing arts that are offered for almost anyone of any age, infant through adult, at the Baird Center. You can register online or in person at the Baird at Five Mead Street. A ten dollar discount does apply if you already have a rec badge. So you can go to thebear.org if you wanna learn more about that, or just stop down at the Baird Center and see what's available. I also want to make sure to give a special shout-out to the Alpha Sigma Phi fraternity at Seton Hall. One of their members who is also a volunteer on the rescue squad had reached out, and they they started a really incredible program to give back to our community, which is snow shoveling for seniors. They did dozens of houses. I think all the fraternity members got a pretty good workout the last snow that we had. And basically, what they'll do is if you know someone who isn't able to shovel out their own driveway or sidewalk, which, reminder, you do, you are required to do your sidewalks within 12 hours of the snow, and if you know someone who isn't able to do that on their own, you can contact this fraternity at Seton Hall, and they'll send some strapping young fraternity members down to your house to shovel for you. This is, again, the Alpha Sigma Phi fraternity. I know it's been kind of floating around social media and the news lately, which is really great. If you do want to get in touch with them, you can do so by calling 973-913-4609, or you can email them at alphasigvolunteer@gmail.com. So again, thanks to Alpha Sigma Phi. I know that they did a whole bunch of houses, and it was much, much appreciated by some of our residents. Just another really great example of, I think, the improved relationship between the town and the university, and so much of that, interestingly, is not just driven by our two administrations trying to work more together, but an enormous amount of that energy is coming from residents and is also coming from students, who are trying to find ways to kind of bridge the gap between our communities, and this is just a very cool program that I wanted to make sure to call out tonight. And again, people can call that number. Hopefully, we won't have any more big snowstorms soon. But we did have two presentations that were scheduled tonight, one by the South Orange Performing Arts Center, which has been rescheduled to March 9th, and the other, a TNR presentation, which has been rescheduled to March 23rd. So apologies for the inconvenience if anybody was here or expecting to tune into either of those tonight. Again, SOPAC will be March 9th, and the TNR presentation will be March 23rd. We do have another presentation, which I'm always very excited about, especially tonight, and this is from the Community Relations Committee, and they are going to give out this month's Villager of the Month award. I don't know if we have
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on.
Ah.
Yeah.
We should be moved.
Yes.
Members of the Board of Trustees, friends and neighbors, all of you, tonight we are honoring our January Villager of the Month. Forty-seven years ago, when my family and I moved to South Orange, there was a sign at the end of one of the streets that ran from South Orange to Orange, which said, "You are leaving South Orange." Well, the sign was redundant, because it was very obvious that you were leaving South Orange, because the town that you were going into, Orange, had hit some pretty sad times. Orange had had its heyday in the days when it was the hat factory city in the United States. Think Stetson, folks. He came from there. But unfortunately, the hat factories began to move out. Some went south, some went overseas, and Orange hit very sad times. So, at that time, with the difference in the two towns, somebody thought you needed a sign. Fortunately, the sign is long gone. So the years went by, and my youngest son, who was at that point in high school, came to me and said, "Mom, there was this guy that came to speak at the school, and he was telling us about a renaissance in Orange, and they could even use volunteers, and I want to volunteer." And I said, "Whoa, back up a little. Who is this person?" And he said, "Well, his name is Pat Morrissey." And I said, "Who?" Now, I would never say that today, but I did it that time. And so he told me a little bit about the renaissance in Orange, and I gave my okay to his volunteering, but being a mother, I sought out this man. I had to check him out, since my son had been so impressed with him. And I really, I truthfully must say, I was expecting to find one more contractor who was gonna tear down all the beautiful buildings in Orange, who was going to throw up high-rise buildings, and all the hat factories that were left were going to be demolished. Well, I was wrong. What I found was a man with a vision and a plan to put that vision into effect, and that is when HANDS, the organization, was born. HANDS stands for Housing and, let's see, H-N, and Neighborhood Development Services. And I am going to give this award tonight to the founder of HANDS, because he was particularly responsible for the renaissance and the revitalization of Orange. If you go through Orange now, and you look, you're seeing a very lovely city, especially the valley area. Wisely, they drew on the arts and the art community to come in and give them a hand, and they turned out in droves. It has been wonderful. I particularly love the old firehouse, which is now an art gallery on the lower level with rooms and for the artists in the upper levels, for them to stay, for them to use. And now there are restaurants there. There was a time when you got out of Orange before it got dark. That's no longer true. Now, there are two cities, side by side, small cities, but cities which are both worthy of notice. So, I sought out Pat, and he told me a little bit about the HANDS, HANDS, his organization, and what he had in mind for his organization. And the years went on. My son went away to college, and the whole atmosphere changed in Orange. There was a feeling of hope there. There was a brightness. It was amazing. I particularly loved to drive around Orange, and I could feel that change in the air. It was fun. Fun to watch, fun to be part of. And so, this evening, well, what I want to say mainly is, having watched the change and known the person who was responsible for it, I often thought of the Bible, which says, "To love your neighbor as yourself." So tonight, what I want to do is introduce the man from South Orange, who looked across the border, saw his neighbor in distress, and did something about it. May I present Pat Morrissey.
Yeah.
There you go. It's all yours.
Thank you, Catherine. We're gonna hire you as the publicist for HANDS.
That was my son.
No, that's exactly right. It was. Nobody tells the story better. You know, when I did start HANDS in 1986, one of the ideas was to blur the border, that that, you know, what Catherine talked about, was that that border should not be so obvious. And I live on Walnut Court, right at, right at Ridgewood, and, you know, so I'm almost in the Valley of Orange, and, you know, so close there, and it was a place that I, a place that I always loved. But, you know, the spirit of South Orange is really kind of what propels me. I mean, it's, you know, it's so much the same spirit that I grew up with. My parents were, you know, always active, and, you know, when I was young, forced me to be active, and then, you know, as a volunteer and the things we did in school, and I was always selling raffle tickets and doing, you know, newspaper drives, and, you know, one thing after another. But that spirit is, I think, what drives South Orange, and what makes me so excited about it. People probably know my wife, Jean Campbell, better than, better than me, because of what she and some friends of hers have done with South Orange Maplewood Education Foundation, which is now the Achieve Foundation. So, you know, Jean Campbell, Joan Lee, Deborah Prince, Thea Oaken, you know, built that organization, and others, others have taken it over now, and, you know, just done wonderful things, and I really want to be able to acknowledge that. Our three kids came up through the South Orange schools. They're, they're now out of college and all working, but, you know, the schools have been so great for our kids, that town has been such a great place to, to raise kids. We've been here for 30 years. I'm so honored to be named Villager of the Month. Thank you all. Thank you, Catherine. And, and if I can, if I can pull the, these two towns together, they belong together, you know, in, in so many ways, and, and of course, the valley, the valley neighborhood, which is now the Emerging Arts District, is kind of the first stepping off point, right? So if we can sort of stretch that, that valley arts district, you know, if the valley arts district starts here at SOPAC and stretches right through to Hat City Kitchen and the Firehouse Gallery and Luna Stage, which is actually in West Orange, we should think about that, that that, that valley district, you know, should start here and, and at least that far, right? So, thank you. I'm very honored. It's so wonderful to be here, and it's wonderful to be a part of this great town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, Pat, before you step down, just, I just wanted, you know, to congratulate you, but also say, I mean, I love your, your conversation, you're talking about blurring the lines and, and how, you know, the goodness spreads across. When we give out the award for Villager of the Month, we typically do it for someone who's had a profound impact for our local community, so I love that you've expanded that. But what you've also done is just brought goodness to South Orange yourself by representing, being a native of South Orange, for the good that you're doing, not only here, and I know you're involved with the arts as well as your family, but it just, it sheds great light on our community and our residents, so I just really want to thank you for that.
Thank you. It's so nice.
I'm gonna add one, one personal touch to this a little bit. So, some of Pat's kids who grew up in South Orange Maplewood, I grew up with as well, and we used to ride to school
Not so long ago.
Not so long ago. We used to ride to school together, and I was late every single day. And, you know, I always heard little kind of bits and pieces about what you were doing and what you were working on. As I started to, when I went to college, and then when I started to get more involved around here, after college, I started to put pieces together about some of the things that I had heard a little bit about, that now I was seeing much more firsthand. And so, even just from getting more involved in town, and, you know, Pat's name comes up when we have discussions around here about what we're doing to make sure we're supporting the arts, whether it's, you know, how you've been involved here in South Orange, or through HANDS in Orange and West Orange. But one of the most amazing things that I was thinking about when I ran into you at the, at Trustee Column's American Planning Association New Jersey Conference, is that not only, like Trustee Schnall said, is it so great to have residents in town that are, that have become leaders in these fields, and go out and represent not only the work, but actually the person, right? It's like, this is the kind of people who live here are people who care about these things, and that's an amazing thing as well. You know, that's a whole other story. And, and so for me, kind of growing up and seeing some of that, but not really understanding all of it, and probably still not understanding all of it, it's just kind of built on itself over the years, and as I go to some of those different conferences and events and workshops, and people talk about planning, they talk about South Orange, they talk about Orange too, all the time, and it was always, it was always amazing for me, just on a personal level, 'cause I'd go somewhere else in the state, see these workshops, they'd be talking about what HANDS is doing in Orange, and I'm like, "Oh, I know that guy." And, and that always just kind of inspired me a little bit, and, and so anyway, just to kind of echo Trustee Schnall and what has been said before, you know, I know the work that you've done, again, not just kind of through here, and not just in your work through HANDS, which has been, you know, incredibly transformational for Orange and for that area, but also just being, you know, I think that's kind of what the Villager of the Month embodies, is that this is, this is the kind of people that live in South Orange and Maplewood, and, you know, you're a great example of that, and I, you know, certainly feel lucky to have known you and your family for so many years, and so congratulations on this and, and all the work, and hopefully, a lot more to come.
Thank you, Alex. You know, South Orange really is the model. I mean, what a, what a, what a place to, to raise a family and to, and to be a part of. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I would, excuse me, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. Does anybody who wishes to speak, if you'd like to come forward? Okay, seeing as there are no public comments, I will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to the approval of minutes. The first is, we have regular meeting minutes from December 8th and 15th.
I'll move.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner, seconded by Trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay. The next is minutes from the December 29th special meeting.
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee Schnall.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. And we have executive session minutes, let's see.
December 15th.
December 15th and 29th, and January 12th.
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. And we have executive session minutes, let's see.
December 15th.
December 15th and 29th, and January 12th.
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. All right, let's move on to ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2015-01, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 40, alarms, and adopt new requirements for the registration of alarms in the township of South Orange Village.
Okay, I'm seeing as this is the public, second reading of this ordinance, I'd like to open it up for public hearing if anybody has any comments on this ordinance specifically. I'm seeing as there's nobody who wishes to speak, I'd like to close the public hearing. Unless there's any further questions or comments from the board, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Column is absent. Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. We're gonna read the title.
Ordinance 2015-02, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance amending the code of South Orange Village, Section 92-200.3, 92.200, 200.5, and Schedule 1 of Chapter 92, permitted principal uses for Districts PRCB, Plan Residential, and Cluster B.
So because of some timing issues, we need to be able to move, we need to move this ordinance to the 9th, right?
I'll move to table.
Okay, so I have a motion to table 2015-02 to
I second.
March 9th. Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay. And Mr. Lewis, you had mentioned that you felt that we should also vote, formally allow the planning board an extension to consider this?
Yeah, I don't think there's any resolution.
I would think just a motion and a voice vote. Technically, the planning board has 45 days. That would expire on February 26th. Their next meeting is not until March 2nd, so just a motion to extend the review period for the planning board would suffice.
Okay, it was moved by Trustee Schnall and seconded by Trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay. And Mr. Lewis, you had mentioned that you felt that we should also vote, formally allow the planning board an extension to consider this?
Yeah, I don't think there's any resolution.
I would think just a motion and a voice vote. Technically, the planning board has 45 days. That would expire on February 26th. Their next meeting is not until March 2nd, so just a motion to extend the review period for the planning board would suffice.
Okay, it was moved by Trustee Schnall and seconded by Trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, 2015-03, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance requiring property owners to maintain a safe line of sight at intersections and adopting the State of New Jersey standard for such line of sight.
I'm, I'd like to move to table this one.
What's that?
I would like to move to table this one.
Okay.
I second it.
To the next meeting, or to
You have to table it to a date.
Yeah, let's table it to the next meeting.
So the next meeting is the compressed one with the State of the Village.
Yeah, so let's move it to the March 9th.
Yeah, I would say table it to March 9th, and I, I think it, we ultimately may wind up being revised substantively, that we may wind up introducing a new one, but I would say March 9th.
Who's reviewing the ordinance that we're considering this? Barry? Who's, who's looking at the reviewing the ordinance?
I, I think the village engineer came up with a potential solution that I think collectively, those that have been involved, believe it might be a little simpler and easier and application better for the police department.
And to be perfectly frank, that's gonna involve Sheena and some discussion, so I wouldn't really want to pass this tonight without her here, without having that discussion.
Okay, so there's a motion to table 2015-03 to March 9th.
I second it.
Seconded by Trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? And just, correct me if I'm wrong, but And just, correct me if I'm wrong, but is, if we're tabling something that's on second reading, that will also allow you to notice the meeting for the public hearing for the March ninth? Okay, so we have a couple ordinances for first reading.
Two thousand and fifteen dash zero four, introduction and first reading of a bond ordinance authorizing capital improvements by and for the township of South Orange Village in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating an aggregate amount of two million five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding two million four-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty in aggregate principal amounts of bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis or Trustee Levison, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, it's fairly self-explanatory. It provides us, which we've done historically, to get an early jump on some of the road projects. There's a relatively generic line for building, public buildings and facilities, which will give us some flexibility, depending on where the bids on Village Hall come in, and a number of the other projects, including the pedestrian bridge and that project. So I think it's, you know, that's, that's the gist of it. It puts the funding in place rather than wait on the full budget.
Correct.
Thank you. Unless there's any questions or comments, have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Levison.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collins is absent. Thank you.
I move that the ordinance, it's twenty fifteen oh-four, be scheduled for second reading and final passage on the March ninth, twenty fifteen, board meeting and a public hearing be held at that time for reference ordinance. The village clerk has been authorized to take necessary action to publish public notice for such hearing.
Okay, moved by Trustee Davis Ford.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
Resolutions on the consent agenda, resolution two thousand and fifteen dash twenty through resolution two thousand and fifteen dash thirty-seven have been placed on the consent agenda.
Just one of those nights where you're glad we're not reading them one by one. Are there any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
I just have one question on number thirty-six. We had the open space grant for fifty thousand for the Connett Building Roof. Is this what was the additional amount, or what, can you just?
Well, we had retained the architects originally to do the plans and specifications for the roof replacement, which, there was the original open space grant for fifty, or historic trust, for the fifty thousand, which did the assessment. We have received a hundred and fifty thousand county open space grant, which will apply towards the roof project. We did an original scope of services for the architects. In the course of their investigation, it revealed that the windows had become so deteriorated, which was not contemplated, that they have to, need to be replaced, so the architects have additional work in specing out, doing the plans and specs for the window replacement. So this, this is an additional fee for the architects to include that within their scope of work.
But, just to be clear, so this is the architectural spec work, it's not the actual window replacement? That would be additional?
No, this is the architect's work, right. And then we will then anticipate going out to bid within the next month or two. The bids would then include the window work as well. So whatever that bid comes in, we have a hundred and fifty thousand towards the overall pot coming from the county open space.
Okay. I have just a further explanation for public record regarding resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-two. That's a resolution accepting a proposal from HDR to conduct a water system conditioning study and prepare a capital improvement plan.
Yeah, so HDR is an engineering firm that has worked closely with the village, and in fact, their predecessor company, they actually merged and took over a company that we'd worked with for even longer period of time, who is very familiar with the system, been very involved in our ongoing issues with East Orange Water System. As the board and the public are aware, we recently approved a contract with Jersey, New Jersey American Water, with an eye towards, at the end of our contract with East Orange Water System at the end of twenty sixteen. So in anticipation of that, in advance of that, we're going to be taking over the system. We're going to be responsible for the maintenance, any repairs, closing leaks. One of the big concerns we have is kind of a history of unaccounted-for water with East Orange Water, and once we take over and we're paying for the water, that becomes increasingly important. So HDR, we asked for a proposal. This falls within our existing ordinances where it's additional services from an existing professional service contract. They will do a complete and comprehensive assessment of our, our system, give us a heads-up of what we need to plan for, what kind of deferred maintenance, what kind of repairs, what we could do to address the unaccounted-for water system, and overall prepare a plan. So it's, this is all part of our, you know, master plan of moving over the next two years to be prepared to take over the water system January first, twenty seventeen.
And this study, you know, from what I understand you shared with us, will allow us to identify the deficiencies in the system and maybe, in the, in the long term, improve, reduce the ratables to residents, because we've identified the deficiencies and addressed them.
Yeah, certainly, this is one component of, I think, the overall plan, and the plan is we, you know, I don't think, I need to kind of revisit the experience we have with East Orange Water. We're going to take over. In advance of that, we want to be as prepared as possible. And, and again, the importance of doing it now is to identify, again, sources where you're losing water, because once we start paying for the water, then we're paying for the water, and that will drive the rates up, and ultimately, the customers and residents will be paying for it. So identifying those, identifying deficiencies in the metering that may be under billing people, identifying, you know, so all in all, I think this is just a very responsible act to make sure that as soon as we take it over, we have as good a system and as good an assessment of the system as possible, and we'll have already started to hopefully implement as many repairs and upgrades as we can to make it more efficient, to ultimately control the rates to the consumer.
Thank you.
The big deliverable is going to be a ten-year capital plan for the system.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions or comments, could I have a motion?
I move.
For the consent agenda, moved by Trustee Davis Ford.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collins is absent. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution for separate action, resolution two thousand and fifteen dash thirty-eight, resolution amending temporary appropriations to fully fund CIF debt service and other accounts which are exempt from the twenty-six point two-five percent statutory amendment.
Excuse me. Mr. Lewis or Trustee Levison, is there anything that you'd like to add of this resolution?
No.
No. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levison.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Could I have the roll, please?
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collins is absent. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of bills. Trustee Levison?
I move the, the bills list as distributed by the treasurer, excuse me, the CFO, and to the, to the board.
Okay, moved by Trustee Levison.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collins is absent. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the second part of our meeting, our reports. I will begin. So there was a few things that, I was on vacation in Costa Rica for the first week and a half of the year, and there were a couple of things that I thought were interesting that might be worth bringing up here. And Adam, if you don't mind turning the computer on at some point. One was that, just something that I noticed a lot, which I have not noticed that much here in the United States, which is most taxis seem to have bicycle racks on them. And I don't always see that here too often, the idea that you're taking a bike and also then taking a taxi and then getting back on your bike and going somewhere. And so that's something that I know we're going to talk a little bit about during the State of the Village, but that is more in the plans for some of what we're doing with the jitney service here in South Orange, which is great. The more things that have better bicycle access, the better. But it's just interesting, you know, much smaller, much more rural country, you know, the taxis all over the place. There were bikes strapped, some somewhat haphazardly, somewhat more officially. And the other was also just the surprising access to public transit in extremely rural areas, that even in some of the most rural areas of the country, which is where I spend some of my time, there were still buses. There were still public buses, and bus, the bus stops were kind of hard to find. Often, there were no signs of where the bus stops were. But there were public buses that you could hop on, and they were obviously, you know, very inexpensive and take you around different parts of the country. And you got to rural areas in the United States, and you, there are not usually, is not usually a bus system, you know. And so that's something that, you know, is just kind of worth thinking about. Obviously, we're in a different, you know, a much more dense environment here in South Orange, but when you go out to West Jersey or South Jersey, or you start to go, you know, far out away from, you know, the New York City area, and you get into more rural areas, oftentimes, there's no public transit option for people. And that was just something that I thought was worth noting. And another thing that is worth noting was the number of national parks that existed there. You know, it's not dissimilar from the number of national parks that we have here, but something I'm going to touch on a little bit more during the State of the Village, is actually what our role in South Orange is in actually that large-scale kind of preservation, right? Our responsibility, and I think I can speak for the board, when I say that we share a sentiment where we want to preserve history, preserve open space as much as possible, but when we're doing that, and when we're thinking about that, it's not just about preserving open space in South Orange, right? If we're talking about infilling into denser areas and parking lots and places that are already impermeable surfaces in South Orange, we're talking about people living in places where you may now prevent, you know, a housing complex from being built somewhere out in seventy-eight, you know, in West Jersey, where there was open space. And so that we have kind of a role, you know, as a forward-thinking community in not just doing preservation and open space here in, within our borders, but that actually our actions in building housing have a much bigger ripple effect, that you're now allowing people to live in an infilled, less ecologically damaging way than if they were to build a house out in the middle of the woods, or, you know, worse, a housing complex out in the middle of the woods or in open space. So I think what we'll start to see is more of these smaller, you know, urban kind of transit-centered towns start to realize that they play a much larger role in that. And that's something that's just kind of worth keeping in mind as we go about doing what we're doing, that it's not just about South Orange. And then one of the most interesting things, which is what this picture is, if anybody can see it, so this is kind of a mountain range, that there's kind of a long panoramic of it, and you can't really see any of it to show you the whole thing, but the whole thing, miles and miles of windmills on the top of it, made for a little bit of a tricky motorcycle ride. It's obviously very windy up there. But what is interesting is Costa Rica, as a country, over ninety-nine percent of the country's energy is from renewable sources. And over eighty percent of their energy comes from wind. And especially for what's often, I guess, considered a developing country, to have, I think, the last statistic that I saw was ninety-nine point two percent of their total primary energy is from renewable sources, solar, wind, and others. And that as a, as a nation, they're actually on track to be completely carbon neutral by twenty twenty-one, or that's the goal. And I think, I don't actually know what the number is in the United States about what our percentage of energy is derived from renewable sources, but it is nowhere near ninety-nine percent.
Might be ninety-nine percent the way.
Right, the other way, right. So anyway, it was just kind of an interesting thing. I'm, you know, riding around, I see these windmills, I'm like, this is incredible. Go back and look up the statistics of, you know, how much of the, how much of energy is it really producing, and realize that it's actually producing almost all of the energy for the entire country. So it's just an amazing thing, and, you know, as we kind of talk about and debate what we should do here, I mean, you see a lot of countries that are investing in more renewable energy. It's something that we've tried to do on a local level through programs like Solarize Soma, where trying to get homeowners to realize that they have an opportunity to capitalize a little bit on their own home energy improvements. And it's something that we obviously do with the village as far as our seeking of using solar panels, of a geothermal system for the Village Hall renovation, of better HVAC efficiencies, of the biodiesel for the jitney buses, and there's a lot more where that comes from. So anyway, it was just kind of amazing. I was blown away when I saw that. It was almost a hundred percent of all of their energy coming from renewable sources, and that's really something that we should aspire to. And if maybe as a community, at some point, we can become, you know, that level of carbon neutral and start to set an example for others. But anyway, it was something that kind of blew me away a little bit and thought was worth mentioning. Quickly, an update from the public administration course I was teaching at Seton Hall. Several students in the class are still actually working on getting their local ordinances passed. It looks like one of them in particular, I don't want to give it away, because they had, they're, the town that he's in has not, I don't believe has actually considered it yet, although it's coming up either this week or next week, but looks like he's going to get his ordinance passed, which is pretty amazing, going from, you know, four months ago or five months ago, starting the process of getting to meet people in the town. And so that's very exciting, and there's going to be a couple more updates like that as some of the students get theirs passed. But just a great experience for them to get involved and learn a little bit about how things work from that side as they, you know, contemplate a career in public administration. An update on this open government ordinance I've mentioned here before, so this will be in the next legal committee. The last one got canceled because of the snow, but that's on the agenda for there. You know, that's something that we've discussed in the administration between myself, the administrator, the clerk, and our counsel, our attorney, and worked with a number of other organizations and elected officials I'm putting together. So very excited about that. I'm going to vet that in the legal committee before it comes, before the board, which hopefully should be soon. Just wanted to give an update there. We had mentioned a water timeline and resources page for the website. This is something that we're going to do a little bit more of. On issues like this, road paving will probably be the next one, is on issues where there's not only a lot of history and context and explanation, but sometimes there's also a lot of updates going on as well. Water being the best example. We're putting together a page that will act as a little bit of a resource center, so you can go to one page on the website, see the history, see the links to all the documents, the videos of all the meetings we've had, and then see a table of where exactly in the process we are, so that there's really no guesswork required to understand kind of what's happening. So that's something that we're working on right now, and that should be done by the end of the week and up on the website. The next is an update on our new website RFP. So the RFP has been posted online, and we're hopeful for some pretty good responses there. We spent a lot of time working on that. We did add an addendum after a conversation in the Finance and IT Committee last week that had a couple clarifications and updates to that RFP, so that all is updated on the website. You know, we think that it's a pretty interesting project. Again, hopeful that we're going to get some good developers that are familiar with WordPress, which is the platform that we seek to develop it on, and basically working off of all the design, all the content migration that we've already done. So it's going to be a little bit of a quicker deal to get it from this phase to the next. And anyway, that's up on the website now, so if anybody's interested in that, you can go download it and circulate it to anyone who might be interested. And that is everything that I've got. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, just a couple quick ones. Village Hall, as I think most people are aware, we put a RFP out to see if there was any potential for an adaptive reuse of Village Hall in order to evaluate any of those opportunities in conjunction with the Village Hall renovation. We did receive some proposals. We're in the process of vetting those, have requested and received some additional information. We'll be setting up meetings with the individual entities that made proposals to kind of further vet those. Can't go any more detail than that at this point. Village Hall renovation, and that's where the timing becomes sort of...
Excuse me, just one question, no details. I just want to know how many, I guess, companies or vendors are you considering, just the number?
Well, I think we're a little hesitant to give out the number just for competitive purposes, but I can fill you in a little bit behind the scenes.
Okay.
The renovation, we've been out to bid. We didn't run into one issue last week where one of the contractors pointed out that a particular roofing material that was specified was no longer being manufactured. The architect has had to issue an addendum to address that. We're sort of sorting through some legal issues on the notice as to whether that extends the time to receive bids, but under any scenario, we'll be receiving bids at the earliest, February nineteenth, at the latest, March fifth, for Village Hall renovation. And these all kind of dovetail together, because once we get that number in, we can then evaluate the proposals that we received. Redevelopment updates, I did provide a memo. A lot of these were still in the negotiated sort of confidential stage, but of the existing projects, just to give you a heads-up, the gateway is fully CO'd. Two of the... to give you a heads up, the gateway is fully CO'd, two of the three commercial tenants, being Maro's Bakery and DNI Fitness, are in the process of their build-out. We anticipate a ribbon-cutting grand opening likely in March on that project, and Third and Valley continues to progress on schedule, and they are still looking at November, December for CO dates. Lastly, on the 2015 budget, I'll be going down Wednesday to the local finance board with bond counsel and our CFO, this is on our request for approval on the tax appeal refunding bonds, that will have a significant impact on our 2015 budget. So we're kind of holding off on scheduling a workshop till we see the outcome of that hearing. That's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Rothen?
Yes, on, on the waterfront, the, the contract with New Jersey American Water has now been executed by both sides, and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection is reviewing the contract for approval. The next step in the process is that we're going to be going out for an operation and maintenance contract for a third party to run the water system. We have agreed in principle with East Orange Water Commission that the $200,000 per year that they are committed under the contract to provide for capital improvements will be released to us for the year 2014 and 2015, and subsequently also 2016, the last year of the contract, so that we can use those funds to make needed capital improvements that weren't made over the, over the years that they managed the system. Another contract that will be coming before the trustees will be a contract for engineering services for a variety of reasons, one of which is to oversee the design of the interconnection that New Jersey American is going to be making, and also to assist us with the capital improvements that we hope to make with the release of the capital funds from East Orange Water Commission. Those are various, there are renovations that we have to make to our water sphere, to our stand pipe, to renewing our well, the one well that is in operation, and a variety of other activities. And so we're going to need the assistance of an engineering firm to do that as we spend those funds that we receive from East Orange Water Commission. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Clark?
Okay, in terms of public works and infrastructure, actually, I think this number is out of date from-
Cancelled meeting.
Yeah, yeah, from the council meeting. But Christmas tree collection, the Department of Public Works reported to me that there was 2,700 cubic yards of Christmas trees that they brought in, and the last week for that was January thirtieth. So unfortunately, if you still have one, please do not put it out on the curb now. An interesting development would be the development of a bike group. Dan Peterson and the South Orange Transportation Committee have been hard at work in developing a bike group for South Orange, and the idea is to establish a bicycle network within South Orange, and the, the key feature is being that the network would be developed in stages by linking together lower-traffic streets using share rows, so we wouldn't have to lose any parking spaces or, or anything like that. And the idea would be to try to link together some key areas of town and give people relatively quiet streets that they could ride on to get from point A to point B, and then to hopefully grow that out if it is successful in stages. So looking forward to more on that. Also have the line of site ordinance on here, that's a bit out of date as well. We are also, also working with the Village Center Alliance on purchasing some new trash and recycling bins for the downtown areas, and hopefully we'll swing that out relatively soon. Also was going to report on CCR's annual Dr. Martin Luther King celebration, which was a success, I think, glad to see most of you there. Let's see, also shouting out for volunteers, there's still plenty of areas in the village where we could use volunteers. The Energy Policy Committee is looking for a new chair to lead the group. If you happen to be interested in things energy and want to help out your town, please contact me. The Environmental Commission and the South Orange Green Team are looking for members to help with various things, one, the planning of River Day, which is coming up May the third, but also for various sustainable jersey program items. So if you are interested in sustainability projects and would like to get your feet wet and try something, please contact me as well, or you can contact the Green Team at riverdaystaff@gmail.com.
Thank you. Trustee Rosner?
Planning and zoning committee, which will be also meeting tomorrow night at 7:15 PM. At the last meeting, we did meet with some residents who came from Orange Lawn to discuss-
We did meet with some residents from Orange Lawn who did come to discuss their concerns about the proposed project from, they came about the proposed project from, that's being proposed at Orange Lawn to build twenty-seven townhomes. Developers already met with the, with the, some of the residents in the neighborhood, and they expressed their objection to the ordinance that we tabled till next month, and had, wanted to have further discussions about what the possibilities are for the club, and we told them to come back to us with what they want to, to meet with. At the same time, we've asked Orange Lawn to meet with us as well. On Mary Lawn, the, we have a, we're going to be having another meeting on the twentieth of this month to go over, we have no real updates there, we have not heard back from the folks at Mary Lawn, that sisters a charity which owned the property, or any of the other groups that have stakeholders. We are looking at different options for that property, including change in the zoning at the property, which we've discussed extensively at the meeting. Development Committee made a recommendation that was shared with them that suggested that the neighborhood was, and the site was primed for allowing for townhouses at a density of eight to fourteen units per acre. The other stuff we'll give updates on next month. As I said, another, there is another planning and zoning meeting tomorrow night at 7:15.
Thank you. Trustee Calm is not here. Was someone deputized for her update?
I was not deputized.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll do him at the next, next board meeting, because I don't have any bullet points here. Trustee Davis Ford?
We did not have a meeting last month, we, we have rescheduled the meeting and for this, later this month, and will report at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Levinson?
Yes, we had a meeting this past Friday, some of the items that we discussed and, which was described previously about the website, RFP, we did discuss it, vetted some of the issues, and have a, an addendum that has been posted on our website, addendum to the RFP for a new website. Trustee, excuse me, Trustee Schnall is taking that information and passing it on to our PIMC committee for them to have comments back to us. One of the pieces that we've discussed is to create a criteria for being able to select which one of the respondents would be awarded the contract. The other is that there are a number of products that we have, that we've implemented, and we're looking to brand those products with a South Orange branding. Trustee Schnall, if you want to comment on some of the branding that we're planning on?
Sure. So the, there are various applications that we've been adding, in particular, one that we've been using, I guess, for the longest now is Esso Connect, South Orange Connect, which is a reporting system. But those of you who've used it and downloaded it, it's a very useful app on your mobile phone. The idea is that also can be sort of a portal from when you log into that, the first time you, when you do it, it will recognize you if you, if you save your ID. So we're using the Esso Connect as kind of a universal portal for, for staying connected, that's why we're calling it Esso Connect. The Esso prefix is obviously, that's, that's the branding we went with. So the other applications we're looking at is our reverse nine oh one, three one one everbridge system, and we're calling that Esso Inform, because primarily it is to send information out to inform our residents as well as alerts. So they would both be under that, that sort of platform of Esso Inform. Peak Democracy, which is something we have introduced a few months ago, we haven't really had a chance unfortunately to really get it going. We intend to, to do that in the next several weeks or so, but that will be called Esso Discuss, because the idea there is for residents to opine and share their thoughts on various issues that are related to our community. And the last one to be branded is Esso Volunteer, which is a pretty obvious one, it has to do with, we're putting in a new application around volunteering and citizen engagement. That's, again, the, the prefix will be the Esso, and hopefully meaningful names after that to help you understand and remember what you're, what you're looking at.
Thanks. And in the area of the Esso Connect, Deputy Lerner, Deputy Administrator Lerner, and I will be putting together some more detail associated to South Orange Connect being more descriptive responses to the various activities which people are responding to, and as well as setting some criteria for how long a particular task should take, and so that we have good measurements on how staff is responding to the calls. Lastly, we discussed our project management software, and the software product that we're using is RIC, and that should be moving forward with the various projects that we have, specifically the ones which are capital projects, where it will detail out the various tasks, timeframes, and the manpower required for implementing them, as well as the cost, and be able to manage our cash flows that are required to support those kinds of products. That's about it.
Okay. Trustee Schnall?
So in the Standing Committee of Recreation Cultural Affairs and Arts, our meeting, first of all, the, the current programs, the winter programs are underway and are going smoothly. It's nice to have a group that, that has things running so smoothly, we really don't have to get that involved with that. Also, the, the gallery, the PR gallery has a new exhibit, I understand, I was not able to attend the opening, but I understand it went quite well. But the one thing that, where we're spending a fair amount of time, and it's not a short-term thing, it's, it's in terms of long-term planning of our various assets, and they include the physical infrastructure of our buildings, primarily the Baird, as well as our tennis courts, our pool, and these are, are big items, and they produce large capital projects for, for either rehab or, or maintenance. So we're really, we're spending some time trying to figure out how to prioritize those, because unfortunately, they're all in, in need, they're not new. And the other thing I've asked the folks there to look at is programming, what do we see trends-wise that our residents are going to want to do inside of a recreational and cultural arts program, and let's try to think about how we can serve that programming best with the infrastructure that we have or need to get. So look, look-
Trustee Schnall, we have a high rate of participation in all of the recreation and cultural affairs programming in South Orange, so this investment on the capital infrastructure is, I think, vital in far as long-term planning to the quality of life and the expectations of the residents here. They're really engaged in the programs.
I agree a hundred percent, and that's why we're going through these efforts. And in fact, one of the other great assets that we have, and we don't have a, a, a large amount of them because of the, the, the small size, the footprint of our village in terms of fields, but we share fields with our sister town Maplewood, they use it as part of our recreation programs, we sort of share amongst ourselves, and we give them, unfortunately, the barest amount of upkeep, and we do a great job, I think. But the, the challenge is that oftentimes fields need to, to go foul for a while, to be not used in order to replenish themselves. And there's always, to your point, consistent demand for that, that makes it really hard to pull them off and out of use. So one of the things that we are discussing right now is putting together a separately, a trust, a fund to do maintenance and upkeep of these fields, where we'd probably be funded through a user fee, that means a participant would actually, upon using, there would be a separate additional fee to enroll into a program. And we've actually met, we've included representatives from not only Maplewood and South Orange, but the Board of Education, the Cougar Club system, and we've had a couple of meetings, and that seems to be going pretty well. The other thing I would like to feature, I always like to feature one, one event each time I do a report, this one is the South Orange Health and Fitness Program, what we're calling So Fit. This is really fun, we, we made this available to our residents, and twice we actually had to extend the number of people in the program. We wanted to keep it kind of small this first time, run it, see how it goes, and then, you know, expand from there. We're now over a hundred and twenty people, residents, who are, who are using the program. We had a weigh-in, the idea is for complete fitness, to, you know, take care of your body, your health. But one of the ways, we wanted to make it a little competitive, just to kind of make it a little fun, and the weigh-ins were, were last month, the first month, after one month, we'll have our, our first prizes, that's next Thursday, so come down to the Baird, those of you who are participating. We have a weigh-in for everybody, and the person and team, actually, the team is only at the end, so the individuals will come in, we have different categories, male and female, and the person who has the highest percentage weight loss on each month will win a little prize. But I, I do want to emphasize, that's great for those people who win that, and that, that's an individual prize, but really, the, the prize goes to everybody that participates, and even more so, it's everybody. Even if you're not in the program, one of the lucky hundred and twenty, as Alex has said, you know, this is one of those things where you get to watch and see how others are, are role models, and, and you get to passively participate because it's, it's good for all of us. And if you see somebody in a t-shirt, I know it's a little cold right now, the So Fit t-shirts probably haven't come out that much, but encourage them. And next time when we run the program again, we'll hopefully be able to open it to more people. It's very exciting. We also are fortunate to have one of our South Orange residents, Dr. Hugh Snyder, it's kind of his, it is his brainchild, actually, he came to Trustee Calm and myself with his idea. We had a little social gathering dinner at Above just this past week, and he polled the participants, about twenty-five to thirty folks came, and he asked them what kind of educational sessions would they like to hear, would they want to hear about nutrition, healthy eating, healthy cooking, how better to cook, gluten-free diets, exercise, a number of different fun topics. So, again, this was not something that was extremely well-planned and thought out ahead of time, we, we really felt that this would be organic. So Dr. Snyder is taking these ideas and reaching out to his network, and we expect to see some of these educational programs in the next couple of months. We've already had business organizations, companies have made great offerings, including discounts, DNI Fitness has a twenty percent off program, a number of really good, big savings are actually for the participants. So it's, I think this is already very successful, and I, I expect this program to, to continue to grow and expand. So, a lot of fun there.
Steve, next weigh-in?
I'm sorry?
When's the next weigh-in?
The next weigh-in is not this Thursday, but it's the following one, it's the nineteenth of February at the Baird. And the hours of that, again, for the participants, we start early, we make it available to everybody, I think it's from seven AM to ten PM, so it's pretty much, unless you're out of town, you should be able to weigh in.
You lost a lot of weight, Walter.
No, I've not, I've not.
It's about overall fitness as well.
Really, we want to make sure everybody has a chance. If you're out of town, let us know, and we can make alternative arrangements as well. So that's the Rec and Cultural Arts. PMIC unfortunately could not meet, last month, we're meeting again this Thursday to discuss various different topics. I hope to report to you, not that I want to sort of tease you, but I guess I have to tease you- to tease you, I expect two weeks from now I'll be able to talk about a big and very exciting new event for the village, but not going to say anything else now.
Tease.
Tease, tease, sorry.
I guess I have to come back to the next board meeting?
You do, that's how we're going to get you, could have come back.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Schnall. At this time, I'd like to, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments, does anybody who wishes to speak? Seeing as there's nobody who wishes to speak, I'd like to close the public comment period. We had a couple of quick discussion items. I know Trustee Column had requested a discussion about traffic, common pedestrian's safety. I'm not sure-
Again, I was not deputized. The only thing, and I don't know, and I'm sure she'll speak to it more at the next meeting, we did, and actually, Trustee Clark and I were there in attendance, there was a meeting with Street Smart New Jersey this morning, as well as representatives from Safe Roots to School, actually, the consultant, Chief Shalell and Captain Heckle. I think a very positive meeting. It's just, I think, the next step in sort of formalizing and really institutionalizing our pedestrian safety and traffic safety commitment. But I'm sure she, you know, will add more.
Trying to develop a more robust program here in town that's addressing that specific issue.
Okay. Trustee Levison, Old Stone House.
It's like Groundhog Day.
Yeah, right. Well, I had asked for an update, and maybe Adam can fill in where we are with, I guess it is-
We've put the application on hold just with other projects that have been put ahead of that in the priority order. We can start working on it soon.
Well, why don't you just, you know, update where we are with what we're attempting to do on the project?
So what we're trying to do is the application to remove the Old Stone House is a pretty detailed application of what we have done in the past, what our intentions are for the future, and what money we've spent and why it's a hardship for the village to continue to keep its, to maintain the building. We think we have more than enough evidence that we tried to keep the building in good standing. Unfortunately, the maintenance that's required of the building and what needs to be done, it just offsets too much of what the village can really handle. And so the application is going to show that. We're hoping that the state, you know, votes favorably on the evidence that we provide, and we can move forward and tear it down.
Would it be requiring to refund any grant money that was given to us? And more specifically-
I don't think so.
The last grant that was in question, I think, was at $150,000 for stabilizing the roof, which seemed to be the one that was most in question, that we might have to return if we took this path, so.
I think because of the number of years that have passed, and that we made an extremely good faith effort in trying to keep the building and repairing the roof and trying to stabilize it, I don't think we'd have to repair it, but we would have to have conversations with the state regarding those things, yes.
Maybe we should offer it to the person who doesn't get the bid for Village Hall.
Consolation prize?
I should be sitting next to you so I could kick you.
Well, just the last piece of that, do you have a timeframe in which you expect to move forward with it?
We started with the application, it's probably going to take a couple of months for it to get it done. Compiling all the evidence will take some time. They do require a lot of pictures and graphs, and as well as structural documentation that we'll have to provide, so I give it maybe two months.
Okay. And Trustee Schnall, is there anything that you wanted to add? You kind of went over the application branding.
I think we kind of went through it.
Okay, unless there's any other items, I asked for motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Trustee Rosner, seconded by Trustee Davis Ford, all in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Good night.